Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Fairfield County Council Meeting. Today's date is August 12th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. First, we'll have the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
No move, Ms. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda's approved, seven to zero. Now we're down to our invocation by Sheriff Goins.
Let us pray. Lord God, we just honor you and we bless your holy name and we thank you, Father, for how gracious you are, how merciful and faithful you are toward us, great is thy faithfulness. And, Lord God, we thank you for the opportunity to come together and work together as a team, Lord God, and not just council but all the citizens of Fairfield County for the betterment of quality of life for all. We ask that you continue to guide us and direct us, Lord God, in all things that we do, not only here but in life itself. We give you the praise, the glory, and the honor. We place all things in your hands, and we know as long as it's in your hands, not some things, but everything, will be all right. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Vice Sheriff Goins. Next, our approval of the amendments, regular meeting dated July 22nd, 2019. Do I have a motion?
No move.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved, seven to zero. The approval of July 22nd's meeting. There are no public presentations. Now down to our first public comment session. Ms. Davis?
We have one who wishes to speak, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on Promise Us.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. I am generally in favor of the Promise Program, and I think it offers a lot of promise. Pardon the pun. However, it is the county's duty to ensure that the students have the best shot at taking advantage of this program. And that includes ensuring that accountability and reporting are in place with MTC to ensure that our limited resources go to where they're supposed to go, and there isn't a squandering of the resources. I would also add to that effect, we need to leverage, suggest, push, whatever, MTC, something that one of the council members has mentioned many a time. We need to offer enough classes to make this a viable situation for our Fairfield County students. Last time I looked, the February schedule had 12 classes on it, 12 entire classes. Most of them were germane to basic studies and reaching the end goal of a two- or four-year degree, but it needs to be a more robust program. So, in my opinion, the county's position is, number one, ensure the accountabilities are in place to ensure that the monies are handled properly and that we do not waste the money so that the students are able to take advantage fully of this program. And then the other aspect is, I'd like to see an expansion of the classes offered to ensure that, again, the students are able to take it, fully advantage of this program. And then lastly, some of the details of how this program applies to the very, very important trade skills certifications and training were not clear to everyone on this, and hopefully we can flesh all those out importantly. So, do your due diligence, get accountability in place, protect the students, protect the taxpayers, and make this program work. Thank you.
That concludes Segment One.
Thank you. Now down to our public hearings. We have two for tonight. Item A will be an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Project Gold Star to provide for payment of fee in lieu of taxes authorizing the inclusion of a project site in a multi-county business park authorizing special source revenue credits and other related matters. We'll open this public hearing up at 6:05. Ms. Davis, we have one sign to speak.
We have four who wish to speak. First, Mr. Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway, Fairfield County. All indications are that this is referencing the Teacher Village Project. And my thoughts on that are, what's really germane to the issue is, it's worth a shot. But quite frankly, I like out-of-box thinking, and I like out-of-box thinking that doesn't put a lot of, or any, financial accountability on the county. It's not going to cost the county a dime to move forward with this. It's not going to cost anybody anything to move forward with this. What it may do is, to at least a certain degree, ameliorate our high teacher turnover. It may ameliorate our retention rate of teachers and hiring rate of teachers. And all that leads to more learning and better learning for our students. However, I think what the county needs to do as far as due diligence is this, is protect the county. Protect the county in many ways. First of all, you don't fall for the first price that falls off the truck far as tax breaks or other kind of discounts. That has to be good and fair negotiations. And additionally, I would like to see us protected against any lawsuits. And I'm not talking so much against lawsuits of giving credits, but I'm talking about potential lawsuits between tenants and the developer and builder. We can't get entangled in those kind of lawsuits. Or anybody else that would be suing the developer or the builder. We can't get entangled in any of those kind of lawsuits. Also, I want to ensure that we have, everything's in place, that there's a quality product being put in forth. And again, that goes to entanglements of a nature that cannot involve the county and should not involve the county. So, let's not get entangled, but I think this whole thing is worth a shot considering it's not going to cost us money. And actually, it's not just worth a shot to help our schools and our kids, but it could help our county a good deal. It could be the start of something really big. And getting, you know, you're not going to get more people to live here unless you get the first people to live here. You've got to start with someplace. And this is an inexpensive, good investment to start with, and I think all of you know that if it was going to cost the county money, I'd have to think twice, but it's not. So, protect the county, but move forward with this bill while you're protecting the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Renee Green.
Good evening. My name is Renee Green. How's everybody doing? I'm here in regards to the Teacher Village. Randy basically summed up the need. We do have a need for housing for other people to come into our district. I'm a perfect example. When I first got here 30-plus years ago, Dr. Heath hired me, and you know that's many, many years ago. But when I first got down here, there was no place for me to live. I asked him to look for a place. He asked me, did I want to buy? No, I just want to rent. He took me to the apartments, what is it, Winfield West and the other apartments. That wasn't what I was looking for. The Teacher Village is a place that I believe would attract teachers. I know that if I would have had the option when I first located down here to Winsborough, that Fairfield County, that I would have definitely moved in. And I think that other teachers would be just, excuse me. I just think that it would be a beneficial move for Fairfield County. It would attract people, and I think it would retain our teachers as well, because the distance that we travel to and from, I lived in, I have a house in Columbia. I traveled my 30 miles back and forth for 17 years. Everybody's not willing to do that. So, that's where the retention comes in. If we have housing that's available close to the schools, I believe they would take advantage of it. Thank you very much. You all have a good day.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Lisa Brandenburg.
Lisa Brandenburg, District Seven. Please grant this tax incentive and allow the developer to invest $3.5 million into our county. It's no risk to us. It can only bring good, and that will trigger true economic development for downtown. And then later on, there's a chance for expansion. So, we really ought to be rolling out carpet to this company that they say that Fairfield County is worthy of this investment. Please accept it and expedite this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Shirley Green.
Good evening. Shirley Green, District Two, Ridgeway. The Fairfield County School District Education Foundation is happy to spearhead the Teacher Village here in Fairfield County. The foundation is participating in the economic vitality of Fairfield County. The Teacher Village is an initiative to enter a public-private partnership to create the first of its kind in the Teacher Village here in South Carolina. Gorlick Brothers Capital will build, rent, manage, and maintain the village. Our mission is to assist the Fairfield County School District in recruiting and retaining outstanding teachers in our rural district, and to provide a template to bring the highest level of education to our community. Our initiative will provide 30 rental homes in Phase One on 11 of 22 acres donated by the Fairfield County School District to the foundation. There are many economic benefits to this project. It will stimulate the economy of Winsborough and Fairfield County. Extrapolating data from the Fairfield County Disabilities and Special Needs Board, who have 12 houses, their residential homes generate $100,000 worth of expenditures in local grocery stores alone. That's $100,000 in expenditures and grocery bills alone for 12 houses. If we take a look, at 30 homes could generate approximately $250,000 in grocery store purchases alone. Additional businesses, utilities, and restaurants will benefit from additional people who live, work, recreate, and spend their money here. Churches and volunteer organizations will have new congregants and participants, respectively. With the proximity of construction jobs and laborers nearby, there will be a potential opportunity to have apprenticeship programs in the building trades for our Career Center students. The potential opportunities will be great. Tax incentives have been used here in South Carolina to enhance the quality of life and provide jobs for our citizens. This project will provide the investments Fairfield County needs to thrive and grow educationally and economically. We think this is a win-win situation for our school students, Winsborough, and the entire Fairfield County community.
Thank you. No one else signed to speak?
Thank you. No one else signed to speak, we'll close this hearing at 6:13. Now down to Item B, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from R2 Inclusive Residential District to B2 General Business District of 1.35 acres owned by Surrender Singh, applicant, tax map number 125-04-02-057-000. This property is located at Kincaid Bridge Road, Winsborough, South Carolina, 29180. We'll open this public hearing up at 6:14. Ms. Davis, anyone sign to speak?
No one signed to speak.
Ms. Chairman, some people that wanted to speak, but they got a notice too late. They've received notice today and weren't able to meet the meeting, and they want to say something about it. I'd like to put off any more resolutions or anything on this property until the citizens that own properties around it have a chance to talk about it.
Yeah, this is just a public hearing.
I know it's a public hearing. That's the reason I'm saying that they should be allowed to come and have this again for them to talk.
Yeah. Are you familiar with property we're talking about? We're not talking about the Oak Street property now. We're talking about the Kincaid Bridge property.
I own properties with that.
Okay. Well, we'll discuss it at a later time. We'll go ahead and close this public hearing up at 6:15. Now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Ms. Davis?
Second reading, ordinance number 729, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from R2 Inclusive Residential District to B2 General Business District of 1.35 acres owned by Surrender Singh, applicant, tax map number 1250402057000. Property is located at Kincaid Bridge Road, Winsborough, South Carolina, 29180.
All right. Do I have a motion in reference to ordinance number 729?
No move.
It's been moved improperly second. Is there any discussion in reference to ordinance 729?
This is the one that I was thinking about, that we needed to let the people that, I got a call right before I came up here, and he wants to talk to someone about it. So, this, we're going to have to go on through with it tonight, but maybe we can talk about it a little bit later on.
Well, we still have the third and final reading, so, Vice Sheriff Goins?
Chairman, for the benefit of those that are visiting tonight and have not, and are not familiar with this, could we get Mr. Taylor to give an explanation for you?
Yes, ma'am, we sure can.
Yes, I'd be glad to. I will ask Mr. Chris Clausen, our Community Development Director, to come to the podium to give more details, specific details, on this particular item. But it has been before the Planning Commission, if I'm not mistaken, and was moved forward from the Planning Commission with the recommendation to rezone.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Ms. Chairman, members of council, and members of the public. Yes, this was a rezoning request that was brought a while back at this point to the, so our normal process is we will have a public hearing before the Planning Commission. It's not the, if you will, official public hearing, but for that, we send letters. They're not certified, but we send letters out notifying. We also post in the paper, and we post the property. So, posting in the paper and the property are 15 days in advance. So, that was done for the Planning Commission, and then for council as well. We do the same thing, except we send the letters certified. So, we can't force someone to sign the certified letter. Sometimes they don't. I'm going to have to look into the complaint that was brought, but I called my staff before coming up here, and they assured me they sent out letters. So...
Do you have a map with the property on it that we could look at?
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken, Ms. Lewis, I think that was in your packet. That was in your packet sent to you.
This property is 1.35 acres off of Kincaid Bridge. There used to be a gas station that actually went over onto this property, and so it's the property owner of the former gas station site bought the property that's a flag lot that goes behind it, and they're going to merge those two together. This was in keeping with the comprehensive plan. The future land use map for that area had it as mixed-use commercial, so B2 is an acceptable use of the property for rezoning's sake. Everything around it is B2 to the northwest, southeast. So, it was fine. It did pass the Planning Commission six. We only had six members that night, so I believe it was six to zero. So...
Mr. Clausen, is already a convenience store next door, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion in council? Thank you, Ms. Claus. If not, all those in favor, ordinance 729? Any opposed?
Nay.
Ordinance number 729 is approved, six to one. Now down to Item B, first reading by title only, ordinance number 730. Ms. Davis?
An ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 to provide for the zoning reclassification from R2 Inclusive Residential District to B2 General Business District of 0.5 acres owned by Patricia Maddox, applicant, tax map number 045012400400. Property is located at Columbia Road, Winsborough, South Carolina, 29180.
That was ordinance number 730. There is no discussion on first reading. All those in favor? I'm sorry, do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
It's approved, six to one, ordinance number 730. Now on to Item C, Resolution Number 2019-5, authorizing an amendment to the master agreement governing the I-77 corridor, Regional Industrial Park by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Richland County, South Carolina, to expand the boundaries of the park to include certain real property located in Fairfield County and/or other related matters. If we could, I'd like to defer, so we can get some legal counsel, to, after executive session, if that's okay with counsel. Okay. All right. There are no Boarding Commission minutes. Down to Item 10, Boarding Commission appointments. Item A, it's Planning Commission, reapportment of Mr. J. Chris Knight, District Three. Do I have a motion?
No move, Ms. Chairman.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved, seven to zero, Item A, Boarding Commissioners, Mr. Chris Knight. Now down to Item B, Library Commission. We asking for a term extension for Mr. Paul Dove Jr. He's in District Five. According to our bylaws, we can only serve two terms and one year and a half after that. So, if I could, if, get him...
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we only extend that term by one year.
Motion's been made to extend Mr. Dove's, and seconded by Mr. Bell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved, seven to zero, to approve Mr. Dove for another year on the Library Commission. Old business, we have the contractual matter concerning the Promise Program. I'm sure each council members have received it, but if we could also defer to after executive session, because there are revisions that need to be made in the contract. There's no new business. Now down to our county administrator's report, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I have is a request of action that we have coming from our EMS department. Mr. Mike Tanner is making a request. We have had, unfortunately, a situation where a 10-year-old ambulance with 226,000 miles, the engine has blown on it. And so, he has looked at various options, and we have taken those to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee has made a recommendation that instead of replacing the motor in the ambulance, which would cost $25,000, since it's such a high-mile vehicle and such an old vehicle, and instead of purchasing a new ambulance, which would cost about $235,000, Mike has come in with an option of a used ambulance, a road rescue vehicle for $40,369,000. And that is the option, again, that the Finance Committee looked at and has recommended we take and approve here at full counsel.
I saw a move, Ms. Chair.
Didn't we buy an extra ambulance for the emergency room for us to use to, during emergencies and stuff?
Yes, sir, we did.
Now, shouldn't this one be used instead of getting another ambulance?
We also looked at that and talked with Mr. Tanner about that. Mr. Tanner, if you would like to come up and explain that. And I would also add that we do have money in the Vehicle Replacement Fund that would cover this $40,369. But again, Mr. Councilman Douglas is correct. We did, we were up in ambulance.
Yeah, we, correct. We increased our ambulances to 11, and this time of year, when football starts up, we have nine trucks that we put on during the day. We only have 11. That leaves two spares. And if you'll see, I gave the Finance Committee a list of all our ambulances and the mileages on them. We have two trucks that are under 100,000 miles. So, once you get up into higher mileages, of course, you're going to have more downtime on the ambulances, and we definitely come accustomed to 11 ambulances. And there has been, four times in the last two months, we were down to zero spares. And that's with the 11. That's with the extra. So, we can have the best equipment and the best employees there is, but if we can't get to somebody, we can't help them. So, we definitely come accustomed to these 11, and we found this viable option that we can keep that 11 and keep those spares that are desperately needed to make sure that we don't have to shut down the substation, or we can't cover a football game, or, you know, we can't get to somebody in dire need.
All right. Mr. Bell's made a motion to approve the request. It's been seconded by Mr. Douglas. Is there any discussion in reference to this any further? Since there's no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved, seven to zero, to approve the purchase replacement of the ambulance.
Thank you. Next up, we have, and we've been talking about transforming our transit system, our transit system to make it more to own demand and to look and see how we could partner with the Comet, which is a transit system in Columbia. The Comet, they are, as part of their charter, they're supposed to serve and have services here in Fairfield County and Newberry County, but primarily right now, they do Richland and Lexington. So, we've reached out to them, and I think we've come up with a very good solution to basically take our people and drop them off at their points, and then they can take the Comet at no additional cost to them and go throughout Columbia also. But we do have Ms. De Holmes here, who runs our transit system, and I want her to go into some of the details on looking how we're going to expand our transit system and explain the existing transit system. I think at times, there's confusion on what we do.
Good evening. Like Mr. Taylor had said, that we are partnering with the Comet to expand some services for Fairfield County residents. And Ms. Patty Davis is passing out a little brochure, little folder that has some of the stuff that Transit does in it. If you kind of follow along, I kind of bullet point some of the things. If you have any questions, you know, please feel free to stop me and ask. Like, the very second page just say that, you know, the transit system's been around since 88, and it was established as a public transportation service. So, we're supposed to be providing public transportation. Originally, we own a 5311 grant. That's how we get some of our funding from the state, but it's a grant for rural, public transportation. And the system used to do like the Winsborough Local, the Columbia 1X. It did the shared rides to factories and jobs in the community like Charm. It was in Ridgway Springs. It was in Lancaster, Lewis Ridge. It was in Newberry, et cetera. And it used to get about $300,000 is what the state would give Fairfield County Transit, because it was providing public services. Around 2012, Transit did a drastic turn and went more to the Medicaid side, which is not public transportation. And so, the 5311 grant started being cut because we wasn't putting public miles on it. Yes, sir.
Couldn't we go back to that type of grant?
We own that grant. We own the 5311 grant, but it's for public transportation. We're not providing as much public transportation. We're doing more Medicaid transportation. And I put somewhere, a little bit further down, we're doing about over 300,000 miles a year providing Medicaid service, but we're only doing about 34,000 miles a year providing public, which is why they slashed the grant significantly. So, we went from 300,000 to about 129,000 in funding, and we's not able to draw all that money down. So, we left $70,000 of that 129,000 on the table, because we're not doing enough public. We're heavy Medicaid at this time. Also, as you see, that SCDOT gave Fairfield County Transit $180,000 in 2017 for three buses to do public miles, but we're using those buses to do Medicaid miles. So, we're taking the money that we're supposed to be doing public, and we're doing Medicaid services. So, we have to redirect and get back on the public side, which is what we're trying to do. But right now, we're doing about 1,500 trips a month in Medicaid, 75 a day, five days a week. An example, if you just keep flipping over, Medicaid is 100% funded by the state, but it's, we're running a deficit doing Medicaid. So, the county's having to fund the difference to keep Medicaid, the Medicaid transport going, because the citizens need it, and council has agreed that that's a service that y'all wish to continue to provide. So, we do run a deficit, and the county's having to cover it.
Can I ask you a question?
You sure can.
You, it might be on here. Do you have a total cost of what it costs us to provide this service?
If you...
With employees and everything that we, total cost?
If you keep flipping over, you see where it say a budget performance report. That's just a little bit of the numbers, and I did three years, '17, '18, and '19, to show that, you know, we're doing like the first year, '17, we may have made $341,000. That year, covering all the expenses, which is status everything, the county made $1,500 profit off of Medicaid. But go one more year, the next year, if you look at '18, we made $318,000, but we went in the hole, $39,000. Because as expenses start going up for us, for us fuel, having to pay drivers more to order retain drivers, just the cost of living with insurance, maintaining those buses, and they didn't, the contract has not changed since 2019. they didn't, the contract has not changed since 2012, so we're making the same amount of money, but every year, expenses are going up. So we was in the whole 39,000. Last year, if you look at the last report for 19, we made $366,000, and we in the red 21,000. So we got better due to the fact that we had to start rerouting some trips that just cost too much to do. But when I say we provide Medicaid transportation, the previous director went in, signed the contract that we 100% Fairfield County, which mean anybody in Fairfield County that gets on Medicaid, we have to transport them.
So you would agree that every year, we, Fairfield County is pretty much losing on this type of service, correct?
And for us, yeah, it's not paying for itself. Even though it's 100% funded by the state, we get paid through a broker, which is logistic care. So we get paid through them. The state is paying logistic care. So it may be profitable for logistic care, but it's definitely not profitable. But it's a service I do think that the residents need. Prime example, tomorrow, I have a bus that's going to be in Charleston. I have one that's going to be in Aiken, and one that's going to be in Charlotte. So that's three vehicles and three drivers. This is just taking one Fairfield County resident to a doctor's office. But I got 74 other trips that's got to be done tomorrow.
Right. I'm not, I'm not saying that it might not be needed in Fairfield County, but I just wonder how long Fairfield County can offset the difference. It kind of goes back to the same thing we was doing with the hospital and giving them money every year to stay afloat. So, you know, my question would be, you know, how long, you know, once that figure keeps rising and rising, how long can Fairfield County offset that cost?
Well, we hope that the supposed, the state's supposed to be renegotiating new contracts, so hopefully in the end, it will kick into the cost of everything going up, where it hasn't changed since 2012. Also, hopefully that we'll get a little more, we can manage a little bit better, and citizens will start having appointments a little bit closer. As we open up the hospital, you got other doctor's offices coming in, they hopefully will start being a little closer than not those Charlotte trips, Aiken trips. We can reroute those trips, but it starts looking bad if we constantly reroute those, and then they'll call and say, why can't we take them with their Fairfield County? They don't realize how far it is and how expensive it is to take them. They just see that they're Fairfield County residents, and they need to go to an appointment.
Mr. Taylor, we budgeted a certain amount for the transit system. Didn't we, we're still spending the right amount, and one part of it could be over, and then the next part would, you know, maybe need some.
Right. We understand we're subsidizing the system when we do budget.
Right.
That would be why, if you, you got a question, sir?
Yes. The collaboration with Richland County, will this help offset by doing public transportation? Will that help?
Yes, ma'am. That's why we're trying to turn it back to the public so we can draw down more money from the 5311 grant. So we want to keep the Medicaid because the citizen need it and offer the public, because we do have citizens that's not on Medicaid. We have quite a few that's Medicare. We have quite a few that have to be self-paid. So we want to be to offer something to all the residents in Fairfield County. So that's why if you keep flipping, we want to go into like a rebranding, and Mr. Taylor mentioned, kind of rebranding the system so we're not just known for Medicaid transportation.
And I appreciate, I appreciate you reaching out, you and Mr. Taylor reaching out and doing that because it's necessary to, in order to really just survive in anything. And I understand the Medicaid process, and you're not the only one. Other agencies also run into deficits with that, but it's necessary. But it's, the time comes when, when you find yourself struggling or whatever, there are other avenues that you can take in anything to come together and build on that, and both persons are both agency profit. So that's a good thing that you're reaching out, you're doing that, and I'm sure many citizens, they're going to appreciate it. Once they find out that it's up and it's running, they're going to appreciate that opportunity.
Yes, ma'am. So if you just keep flipping, you'll see where I titled, I think I said, rebranding.
This is the new route?
That's the new route. One of the new routes, yes.
Oh.
Talking about transit, are you going to have, you going to sell season tickets? Or how are you going to make the people pay for, for the use of it?
To pay for the use of the bus?
Yeah.
They'll pay by fare, just like they do on the Comet. Comet is a fare-based system. You have to pay when you ride the bus.
Right.
Ride the routes. So if you, you'll see where, I think Mr. Chairman, the chairman had pointed out the new route, the new design. That's where we plan on rebranding some of the buses so they don't, they will look more like a public transportation system, and you, the citizen can identify which buses are doing public versus which one are doing Medicaid. Because we get a lot of calls, and there'll be, the citizen might say, why can't I ride the bus? It comes right past my house, or it came next door. And that's because it's doing a Medicaid run, and it's out there for that particular resident. It's not out there on a public, on a public side. So we do plan to extend some routes and to touch each part of the county, like Ridgway, the Greenbrier area, the Blackstock area, Blair, Jenkinsville area. It's going to be about three to six months where we can kick all of those in because it takes a while to map those routes out and line the times up. But we do plan to offer services in each of those areas, at least one, starting out one day a week.
Ms. Holmes, I've witnessed the Killian Road Express. I've witnessed the exchange just because I stay in Clumby so much. But have there been any problems so far as of yet, or?
It has. It's just, it just started on the 5th of this month, so we really got to get out there and market, which we are working with the company to help us do some professional brochures and flyers to market there. We just signed an agreement, the county attorney, Mr. Tommy Morgan helped us do that, where right now, we take them down there to meet the Comet bus, but they have verbally agreed, but they haven't sent the signed agreement back just yet. They're supposed to get it back to me tomorrow. Well, once they pay us to go to Killian, they can transfer to the Comet bus for free. Then they will pay the Comet bus on the, to come back, and then we will bring them back into Winsborough for free. So it's just really getting started.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
The next thing we have on the agenda, a similar situation we have with waste management. This is a system that we spend, we pay waste management $994,000 a year, and right now, we recoup about $330,000 for the services that people use in waste disposal. So we have a fee that we charge...
Ms. Taylor, could you repeat those numbers for me again, just a second?
Right now, we have a situation with waste management. We have a contract with waste management to dispose of debris for us. We have commercial, and of course, we have residential. But right now, we pay waste management $994,000 a year to dispose of waste for us. We collect fees from commercial dumpers, haulers of $330,000 a year. So obviously, we're subsidizing this particular program heavily, over $500,000 a year. Waste management does have a contract, and they do have the right to go up on a yearly basis. They haven't gone up in about three years, but this year, they have indicated to us that they're going to go up $1.99 per ton on what they charge, which will make our total per ton charge $57.17. We are recommending that we go up so we can recoup some of what they're charging, this additional fee, go up to $2.50, up an additional $2.50 per ton. That would help us recoup some, again, on the commercial waste that's being dumped. So we're just notifying council that they, by contract right, do have the authority to go up. They are going up, but we would also like, and our code allows us to do this, we have checked with our attorney, to go up $2.50 where they're going to $1.99 to help recoup some of the cost associated with this.
When is that contract renewable?
I do have Mr. Brad Calder here. Brad, do you have the details on that?
It's three more years.
I'm sorry, say that again for me?
So it just renewed for another three-year term?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. I was just curious.
Calder, is it anybody else that we could use that might be cheaper? Or one company?
I mean, for right now, they're about it right now. Yes, sir. I mean, they have a third party that they contract with to actually haul the waste to landfill.
Ms. Bell, you had a question?
When did, when did we renew it?
Just, just past July 1, it automatically rolled over for a three-year period.
What was the name of the facility? We went down there to look at the incentive rate. What was the name?
Corley Construction.
Because one of the things they're telling us is that they might be able to help us get rid of some of the debris. Have they been investigating, working?
They don't take municipal waste. It would only be recyclable materials. Yeah.
So could any of that offset...
No, this is separate. This, yes, sir.
Close to a million dollars a year, that's a lot of money we...
We are subsidizing that one quite heavily, and we probably will request maybe next year, another increase to help cover that gap that we're facing.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Calder.
The only other item I have tonight, I just wanted to announce that our chairman, Mr. Neil Robinson, has been appointed to the COG Committee of the Executive Committee and the Planning and Development Advisory Committee, which, these are good things for us. That helps us hopefully pull some additional dollars down to our area. And I have been named to the Transportation Committee as the vice chairperson. So we will work and try to use those positions to help our county.
It's great news.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Now down, we don't have any clerk to counsel report. Now down to our second public comment session. Ms. Davis.
We have five who wish to speak. First, Ms. Yvette Howard, speaking on blight.
Yvette Howard, I'm a resident of District 7. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon.
Good morning.
Council members and Fairfield County employees. A few weeks ago, I attended a community meeting at the Fairfield High Lunai Building on Fairfield Street. Some of you also attended the meeting. A few days before the meeting, I contacted Central Midlands Council of Government and was told that it had already been determined that the initiative being discussed that night would start with Zion Hill and the Fortune Springs Park area. After talking with, they would make this decision after talking with the town and county council, as well as his staff, on the county and town level. At that meeting, we learned that very limited grant funds will be available for use. As far as priorities are concerned, I think that the neighborhoods where people actually live should be considered first before making changes at the park. Anyone can choose, who chooses to do so, can go and enjoy the park if they have a way to get there, and the park can be a pretty place for tourists to visit. However, people live all day long in residential neighborhoods. We have no choice but to face the blight day in, day out. I encourage you to look at Zion Hill and other neglected residential neighborhoods before once again making changes at Fortune Springs Park. One of the suggestions from that meeting was to use some of the grant money to remove unoccupied, dilapidated houses from properties where owners were unable, unwilling to remove the structures. According to Central Midlands, there will be no means test to determine eligibility for this program. One of my concerns is what is the plan for upkeep of the then-empty lots? Currently, there are laws in place concerning unkept property. Governing bodies are not enforcing these laws. I've heard reasons as to why the codes are not being enforced. The bottom line is that the codes are there, but they are not being enforced, so our neighborhoods forever stand in blight. And I'm bringing this to your attention because, as I was told, that you do have input as to what is done with this grant money. Our neighborhoods, first of all, should be considered because there is where you can have the most effect on the quality of life of all of the citizens of Fairfield County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Jackie Workman, speaking on visions.
Good evening, Chairman Robertson.
Good evening.
And other councilor members. Jackie Workman, District 4. On July 9, 2019, I made the following requests under the Freedom of Information Act. Who decides what is considered to be a special project? How much monies was allocated for special projects in the recent approved budget? How many agencies have access to the county credit card? And how much each department individual is allowed to spend? How much is the county administrator authorized to spend without council approval or authorization? These questions need no research since the budget was just approved by you, the council. Now, I received a letter, I was actually received two. I received a letter from Smith Robertson stating that I should get a response on or before August 29. So that means they need an additional 30 days to reach something that you all supposed to instruct, something that you all supposed to know. The time of cost involved for compliance may be significant. This is what the letter says. But I would not have a clear idea until I have discussed the matter with staff. I want to know what staff? Staff here? Why? Why? Why wouldn't you, the Fairfield County Council, know these answers to the request when the budget was approved by you? Secondly, I understand a proposal has been submitted for a grant to complete the farmer's market. Have you received the grant? If not, where would the monies come from to complete this special project? And I said special project because, first of all, there was no means for approval. I am disheartened, really disheartened, because I have a heart and I have a brain. The county council is not transparent with the taxpayers' money. Now, these monies belong to taxpayers, but it's not transparent. I heard Mr. Bright...
Thank you, Ms. Work.
Okay. Next, Mr. Greg Ginyard, speaking on Jenkinsville Wreck Building.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Greg Ginyard. I'm the mayor of town of Jenkinsville, District 4. I have a complaint that's coming from my community, and it's about the wreck building that's there. I spoke with Mr. Russell Price of the Recreation Commission. He told me the rules were set up by the Recreation Commission and approved by county council. Now, I don't know whether you're aware, but the rule says 18 and under must be accompanied by an adult to come in and play ball. Let's be realistic. Here we are, summertime, parents don't have summer break. They work. And then, how many of you have a 16, 15, 16, 17-year-old that you go to the gym with to watch them play ball? Again, the gym is half-coat, not even a complete half-court. If the kids are there playing ball, what are the parents going to do if they come out? They can't walk, because if you're walking around there, you got six steps to the, between the playing floor and the wall. I mean, it's ridiculous. Now, I would understand if there was some incidents that happened there. You hadn't had the first incident, not the first vandalism, not the first, anything that has happened there. If you put the building there for the community, for the kids to play ball, we know what kind of weather we've been having, 90 to 100-degree weather. Kids in the middle of the day want to play ball, and they can't because they're not going out there in that sun and play. I mean, we've got heat advisories out for people that's working, so what do you think it's going to be for those children? Why are the building there if the kids can't use it? I would ask you to look at those rules and reconsider them. I mean, it's only right. The community is an upright, the Dawkins area, the Blair... I would ask you to look at those rules and reconsider them. I mean, it's only right. The community isn't upright, the Dawkins area, the Blair area, the Jenkinsville area, even some of the Greenbriar area where the kids come from to play ball. They, you know, they're asking me why. I don't have an answer. I'm not on council. They're thinking because I'm mayor of town of Jenkinsville, I got an answer. I don't have one. But I'm here tonight to ask you to give me one. Ask you as council to give me something I can take back to my community. I have told them to call Ms. Goins. Say, that's your District Four representative. You know, give her a call. Ask her. I don't know what has happened, whether many calls have been made or what. But I'm here to talk to all council because it's a county problem. It's not a district problem. You're here to represent the entire county, not just the district that you're from. So I'm asking you to please look at that rules and make a change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Thomas Armstrong, speaking on public service.
Good evening, Thomas Armstrong, District Six. I wanted to take this opportunity to come up tonight to announce the successful twenty-fourth annual Back-to-School Bash as put on by the Zion Hill Prevention Save the Kids Organization, organization that my mother started seventeen years before her passing. I wanted to come up and let you all know that the twenty-fourth Back-to-School Bash was extremely successful. Everybody who came left with something. The whole idea behind the project my mom started was to be of public service to the people of Fairfield County. Not just Zion Hill. It was given that name basically because we live on Zion. That's where we came from. But it was a service that's designed and for the last twenty-four years has been servicing the people of Fairfield County, all of the students. But I come to say that I am disappointed. Well, let me say this first. To all of the council members, all of the public, the churches, the business owners who've contributed, we wanted to say thank you all for your contribution. For those who could not, who didn't, maybe next time. But you know, I'm, out of all of the joys and the happiness and the overall completion of the project for the last twenty-four years, for the last ten at least, at least ten years, the county has not so much partnership as far as in a written contract. There's always been, here's a need, here is a nonprofit organization who's providing a need to the people of Fairfield County. The county have always given us ice. Now, this year, I called up to get ice like we always have in the past. And typically, all there is is three coolers of ice, where we put the drinks on ice in the morning, go back to the school district to put, you know, get ice in the school in the evening to make sure that the drinks are cold while we provide for the kids. Why was I told, no, we can have three coolers of ice this year? You know, ice, there's a ice machine in almost every county building, in the county, at the county home, almost all of them. And when I called up, I was told, no. Well, why not? I need three coolers of ice. The county administrator said, no, he know nothing about it. Well, what's that got to do with it? This is frozen molecules. This is ice that's being generated from the tax dollars. This is a public service to the people of Fairfield County. I called my representative, and he informed me that they was at a retreat. He'll get back with me. He did call me back, but he didn't call me back after I had a conversation with him. Long story short, the school district did what it was supposed to do because it realized that they are here to serve the people of Fairfield County, not our own agendas. Luckily, the sheriff's department fell at night robbery to give ice. So there was ice. But I'm disappointed in the fact that you all sit up here, you get paid money for sitting on this board to serve the people. Y'all realize that you all are here as servants? You're not.
Thank you, Ms. Work.
See you next week, or next group.
Next time. Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on It's a Home Run.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway, Fairfield. I thought the baseball presentation some time ago was a real home run. It was just so inspiring. And it, and it was so inspiring, it stimulated additional thoughts. Why not softball? Why not softball in Fairfield? Why not pursue softball for the children, for the adults, to form leagues? And also to leverage tournaments. While there's all kinds of baseball tournaments throughout the Midlands, there's hardly any softball tournaments. And we talked about how the Fairfield Village can leverage economics. And for every dollar that's spent in a store, you're going to get another dollar thirty to a dollar fifty back in general velocity of economics. And softball could be another, another avenue with softball tournaments. Softball for kids is great athletic endeavors. Let's, let's let the female side of Fairfield County be able to participate and, and come back with inspiring stories. Let's, let's let the adult side softball. We used to, I understand, used to have some great softball leagues in Fairfield. And they're all gone now, as I understand it. And we can do, go a long way with developing softball as not only to improve our youth, improve our adults, improve our reputation, and get some economy into our county that is not presently happening. Softball is probably one of the most fastest-growing sports in America today. And we need to get on that bandwagon to get our kids involved in positive physical activities. Wouldn't it be wonderful to bring up a softball team up here that won a state championship? But I'm not even talking about state championships. What about just participation? And remember, softball fields are smaller than baseball fields, so you can get a lot more of them and get a lot more bang for the buck. And if any of you have been to any of the South Carolina softball games, you'll see the type of enthusiasm, the diversity, and the energy that they generate. And they're so inspiring, not just for young women, old women, also for old men like myself. It's just marvelous to see this type of thing. And I'd like to see what we did with baseball, expand it into softball so that we can show that we're truly a diverse community in expanding our youth sports and our adult sports. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bright.
That concludes segment two.
Thank you. Now down to our county council time. Would any council member like to be recognized?
The first question is, I guess, I don't, Mr. Armstrong, talk about ice. Mr. Taylor, how could we make sure that we can do something simple as ice?
I think there's some more to that story, but I'd be glad to provide people with ice in certain situations.
Okay. And the next, next one is the question, do we have the same rules for play in all of the recreation centers?
Russell and I have talked a little about that. I think it is across the board, that it, I think it is, if I'm, if he explained it to me appropriately.
Okay. Just, just, if you don't mind, would you go ahead and verify that we have the same rules of play for all the centers, recreation centers?
Ms. Bell, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think there are rules across the board for everyone because the main one here in the town, in the limits, aren't as, well, the ones on the outskirts aren't as crowded as the one in the limits. So I don't think they are across the board.
What Russell explained to me was some of our centers were getting used essentially for de facto childcare. We were getting kids dropped off, some very young, and we ended up doing babysitting. We were trying to avoid that.
Look like it's going to be more than this, this, this two. But, but now, if we, if we tell the people in Winsborough that they need to be fifteen, sixteen to play ball, we ought to also tell the people in Jenkinsville that they need to be, they don't need to be eighteen.
I would agree. It needs to be consistent.
Yeah.
I agree. Paul. Vice Chair Goins.
No good bits are you.
You go ahead. Now you go ahead.
Well, just a few things I want to touch on. Good evening. I first want to say I am just honored and, and it was a privilege to go to Hilton Head along with our council team. And I want to thank Disabilities and Special Needs for recommending Fairfield County for the Golden Palmetto Award. It was just an awesome occasion. It was, it was just, I mean, magnificent. It was, they said they've been doing this for forty-four years, and this is the first time that Fairfield County has been selected. So it was a great thing.
No.
Fairfield County's won more than anybody else, six times.
Six years.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, six, eight. Thank you for the correction. There you go. There's your six years. Okay, thank you.
Six, six times.
We were recommended six times.
Won six times.
We won six times.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. But I want to, I want to say thank you to Disabilities and Special Needs for doing that. Thank you so much. Also, just want to touch briefly on the Promise Program. When this was first brought to my attention, I was most definitely in favor of it. I still am and still full support, would like, I was hoping by this time that that would have been completed and in action. And I'm going to stand with that in full support of it. They are just still, for some reason, and it's very frustrating, a few things that need to be ironed out. But once that happens, I'm sure that we'll move past that because we need to move to other things. But it is a great program. It's a great opportunity. I would not change my mind on any wise, whatever it is that I can do to help move that forward, I most certainly will do that. On the Teacher Village, from the beginning, when it was first mentioned, I was excited about it. I'm always excited about new ideas, new things, about growth, about productivity, prosperity. I'm excited about that. The Teachers Village is a great opportunity to attract, a great opportunity to start afresh, a great opportunity to open up the county for more, an influx of residents and businesses. It's our, it's another catalyst that we can use. So on that program, I am definitely fully in support of. And I hope that we can soon get that behind us. That Teacher Village is one of the things I believe that is an attraction for other contractors and developers to come in. We are pushing students through college and other skilled careers. But when they're finished, we always say they move away. They move away because someone said they don't have anywhere here to stay, nice apartments. Everybody can't start out with a home. So developers can come in. We should already be breaking ground for nice apartments, nice subdivisions. These things are just visions that are possible now. We have a great staff, a great team, great citizens, and we can make this happen, and it'd be a good thing. So I want to thank those that are working diligently for that. Transit system, kudos. That's all I can say. At any time that you see it possible to connect with someone else to make things better, quality of life better for anybody, it's a good thing. And that's what we have to do. That's what the future's all about. Nobody accomplish anything by themselves. Never be afraid to partner with other people, to try new ideas, to venture out. Never be afraid to fail, because sometimes we will, but we keep trying. And always remember, what is here, it's not ours. It's only loaned to us. And we are responsible for making the best use of it possible. On the own blight, Ms. Howell, I'm with you one hundred percent. When I walk, ride through the county, even in my community. But a lot of it, even though I know you asked the county, you asked the town, you always, you've been talking about this for years. A lot of it falls on responsibility of the citizens. We set up property many times, and we don't think about what happens to it after we are gone. We set it up, and we don't think about when we get older, we're not gone. Can I maintain it? Will I sell it? Will I make it affordable? Will I make it available for somebody else to use it, to come in? And that's what we should always be doing. That's a part of replenishing our resources. Don't try to hold on to it because we didn't bring it, and we're not going to take it with us. But that's one, that's one of the problems that we have. People will leave, the younger generations not interested in it, and they let it go. And the legality of, people think when they have property, that the county just automatically, you don't pay the taxes, the county just automatically get it. No, it costs the county to get it. And it costs them even more to clean up the mess that somebody else left. But we're going to keep working on that, and we're going to keep speaking. I'm with you one hundred percent on that. We need to clean it up. And I would ask citizens that have properties, at least maintain it. Cut the grass, cut the bushes back, you know, at least maintain it until you decide what you're going to do with it. Ask your children to do it or something. But that is one thing that distracts rather than attracts to our county. And that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Paul.
Mr. Ginyard, I will agree with you. I think the recreation centers need to be open on a more continuous basis so we can get more use out of the recreation centers. The Jenkinsville Recreation Center, according to the rules here, is sixteen years and younger must be accompanied by an adult. So I would ask the county administrator to look into that. Because I think if you can get a driver's license and drive to a recreation center, I don't see where you really would need a parent to go with you. As far as the babysitting aspect of it, maybe do some waivers, and you can only stay there for a certain period of time, one hour, two hours. And doing the waivers would maybe take the liability off of the county. And do it that way. But I do think that we need to, especially in the summertime, when kids are out of school, we need to open them up as much as we can to give the kids something to do in Fairfield County. And then the second thing is, is the public service comment. I take offense to that simply because a lot of us do things that you don't see, Ms. Armstrong, on the public service side. People come to my office on a regular basis, asking for donations, asking for anything else that I can do. And I give donations to people. The ice, a lot of us council members probably wasn't even aware of the ice situation. So that don't involve a lot of us. That involves the county administrator and the chairman. And I do think that once you start doing things simple as ice, and you open it up for one person, and you might have thirty or forty other groups that want ice as well, and if you don't do for them, they're going to take offense to it because we did for you, and we don't do it for them. Somebody's got to be at Public Works to unlock the door to get the ice. So if it's after hours, the county administrator will have to call Brad or somebody else to go up there and get the ice. So I just think doing that on a regular basis might not be a good idea.
Vice Chair Goins.
Also, on the recreation center, I read the rules for the Jenkinsville Rec Center. I don't think it so much is restriction, but I saw it when I read it. I said, number one, that it was a good support system and safety mechanism. And I know the children, we say the children out of school or whatever, but we've got to recognize that they also can get into a lot of things when they are unaccompanied by an adult. Didn't have to say, didn't necessarily say parent or whatever. But I saw it as a safety mechanism for our children. And anytime that somebody sets it up, looking at it like that, and they have not had any incidents, I'm believing because of this, because this is in place. And we have to, the reality of it is, if our children do things around us, when we're watching them, when they are not around us sometimes, and not all of them, some will get into things. And we do have problems with bullying and with other stuff. And we have to, you know, just be realistic about it. But I'm sure it's not just to bar them out or to restrict them. And if we can find ways of maybe allowing them to come in, knowing that there's always going to be, and that was one of the things with the park, always going to be somebody there watching out for our children. That's the main thing.
Well, I do think that the number one responsibility that we need to make sure is protecting the county. And if it's waivers and, and, you know, a certain timeframe where we can make sure we got enough staff there to make sure incidents don't happen, would be a great thing.
Thank you. I just have a few things. While I was at the retreat, I learned that NACA, National Association of Counties, are promoting an app called Tested. As each one of you know, that there are problems with, what is it? Internet services in rural communities. So this app called Tested, you can download it, and it shoots a coverage map to the National Association. So lets you know whether your broadband speed is applicable or up to speed or so forth and so on. So I think that's a good thing to push because we do have a lack of broadband in this area. in this area. Also, um, and Ms. Davis, I want you to put this in, menace that, I just want to remind each council member that, uh, we do have signed a confidentiality agreement, so, and there can be legal ramifications of anything that comes out of executive session, so, um, that's all I have. Councilmember, have anything else? If not, um, next is our executive session. We have three items for executive session tonight. One, a proposed contractual matter of discussion regarding the amendment of the master agreement governing the I-77 corridor regional industrial park. B, contractual matter of discussion and receipt of legal advice regarding agreement between Fairfield County, Fairfield County School District and Midlands Technical College as to the Promise Program. And C, uh, discussion regarding the annual review of county administrator and clerked the council. Do I have a motion?
Sir, move on.
It's been moved and proper to second, uh, we are in.
Did we add the one that you said you were a legal counsel?
Yes, sir, that, those two, the Promise Program and the resolution, yes, sir, it's on there. Yes, sir.
I have to just go over the half of the executive session, uh, only die around.
Well, let's, let's, just remember to pick up your packet and refer to the Promise Program so we can have it in the back. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, we're in executive session at seven twelve.